Alright, so I'd like to call the Wednesday, September eighteen, twenty twenty four meeting of the Lower Southford Township. Board of Supervisors and ask everyone to join me. First, like on the period. Is there anyone wishing to be ready? See no one? Approval of the work session. Minutes from July nineteen, twenty twenty four, July two, twenty twenty four, and August six, twenty twenty four. Any questions or comments on any of the three?
I have no comments on it, but I did notice that they've agenda sporting documents were on the website. As of last minutes. For all break. Yes, for the, uh, there was no work session on the website. I didn't notice an agenda.
We stopped putting them on the door because they're on the. Scroll.
And we should still put on.
Okay.
No, I have no comments on it. I normally make that move, you know, as the president want them, so it's okay here.
So I moved, we accept each of the three, uh, work session meeting minutes as presented. Moved in second and all in favor say aye, aye, oh say nay, motion carries.
Spot the line.
That's right. But all else fair.
So. Or not to make a motion, so.
Alright, moving right along, Public Works Director, Mr. Jones. Good morning.
Uh, update on some projects, uh, the Burgie Mill Road Bridge. Don't have an update on. There's no, no word from either the contractor or the construction manager. On a schedule or timing or lay down areas, trailer area. So. Uh, Roberts Road Bridge, might pull that up, I got a revised plan from Montgomery County. That shows the new location.
It's been this one little plan, it's actually it's been on the work.
See, we're saving a money by doing this.
Is this the front of us?
This. Uh, the new area doesn't have to be paved because it's outside the floodplain, so it'll be consistent with the rest of the road. Doesn't need any curb protection around the upstream side. So from a construction standpoint, uh, I think it's, it's a lot better. Uh, so I still need to get the, uh, I think it's blessing on this, but. This is what they've come up with, they ran the turning templates and it works, works enough, you know, even if it's a couple of. You know, okay, rather than just, you know, or.
It works.
Yeah.
Is this?
They'll make it work.
Is this similar to what?
That's what they don't expect, that's what they're hoping.
It's not the same area that's, it looks like from the data time, felt exactly with ground asphalt now.
Exactly, maybe some grating that that needs to be done, but yeah, and then just removal of everything beyond that.
Well, are they? Are they removing the abutments or just the bridge between the abutments?
I believe they're removing.
Okay.
And then that plan shows like, uh.
Okay.
A, a barrier or some signage right at the end of the, uh. Of the driveway or the, the road so that no one goes beyond that point.
Be pretty difficult to turn around. Purpose. Now Doug, I, I, I feel at least I appreciate, you know, the talks that you have with neighbors worked out great where they wanted to save some trees, all that, I have. No problems, all of that, same as well.
We want that abutment removed because that's something with that tone shift.
Right, I mean, I'm just thinking of what they did at Castle Road where the abutments are still there and just the bridge in between is gone. We could try and do that, yeah, in order of the abutments to be better to keep and just that way if someday we want to try to. Span that.
Okay, try.
Clarify, yeah. Thirty-three feet wide, it's probably sixty, sixty-six, sixty something, yeah, it'd be easy to span. Yeah, you get a, you get a prefab.
Yeah, that means.
Well, yeah, get rid of the pier, right, they do the piers and the bridge leads to a bump, it's giving a chance to do something with that.
Pierism.
Yeah.
Fail.
He always thought one of the capital is a good place to go fishing from.
Okay, so we'll move forward with that, if the, uh, the blessing left county number. Uh, Hope Drive, right turn lane extension and sidewalk project that we're trying to get grant funding for, we've got. One property owner in the corner, drive and mower, that's a reluctant participant, um, so we're just trying to. Figure out some avenues to, to make it more palatable for him.
What do we need from?
We need right of way, we, we've asked for right of way, um, in talking with Andy and Stephanie. Uh, we think there may be, his property goes all the way to what, I guess what used to be the center line of the roadway.
Oh, yeah.
So we're trying to get at least recapture what's roadway and curving and, and a little bit more of the grass area. As right of way, and then we could just do a simple sidewalk easement. For the sidewalk itself. So. Working, trying to get, uh, get, uh, the property input on that, see if that's. Uh, a little more agreeable to him than just. Uh, you know, full right of way, because he was concerned about his, you know, implications on his mortgage and that kind of stuff and. Yeah, I've got a lot of detail with that, but. So we're trying to find some middle ground that maybe it's acceptable for, for everyone. Uh, Yoda Road Sidewalk, this is between Bernal and Col. Bowman is looking to, to. Uh, complete their final design, so there are a couple of trees that are in the way of the ideal path, so I sent letters to the residents. That had the trees, uh, just getting their input, seeing if they would be okay with. Removing the tree, one tree is healthy, the other tree not so much, so I don't see. That tree being an issue, it's just the one tree that, uh, that may be a concern, but. There's other opportunities for us to, you know, to replant some other trees or do something else.
Yeah.
You know, to, to accommodate them, but otherwise you have to certainly, you know, go around the tree. On the, outside the right of way easement issues and when you're. Excavating around the tree in close proximity, you know, uh, my letter basically said, yeah, we can't guarantee that. You know, the tree's going to survive.
On our sidewalk, depending what type of tree it is, like, it's just gonna.
It could even sidewalk, yeah, the best situation is just. Uh, South of Quarry, the quarry road's closed as of yesterday.
Not really, not quite yet.
You know, okay, I didn't, I didn't.
Signs all say, things are bad. Probably today.
Uh, they had their public meeting on Monday. But was gracious enough to attend. Uh, our base repairs are, we're gonna start those tomorrow. It's kind of a quick turnaround and just kind of, uh, a gap in the contractor's schedule, that's Yoda Road. The eastern portion of Yoda Road as it heads towards frets around the curve there, um, and then Camp Waller Road. So there might be some others, I gotta. Try to figure out what, what else we can get done and still stay within the budget.
So Mr. Mortar's quizzical will get satisfied, find the Yoda Road, uh, east of, is it east of frets?
No, it's, uh, it's between Sunset and.
Okay, so in front of Mr. Mortar's property.
Um. Uh, Public Works and Community Center Facilities, uh, actually. We, we're looking at a, a, a third location for the community center building, which is. Right in the, uh, in the whole area where the existing parking lot is. Um, and I actually stumbled on a drone survey of the entire property because we had worked. We're working with, uh, CKS to try to get a, a survey done, so they can at least do a concept plan. So I, I found this and it's a, a local resident who's also, I think he's the resident of the J C's. That did this as part of the, uh, Country Fair Days, I believe. So he was willing to share and, uh, so we're working on scheduling a meeting with CKS for next week so that we can. Do the building layout, figure out circulation and what, you know, where, where you think needs to go where, so that we can move forward with that. Try to keep that whole project moving. Uh, park cameras, uh, the wiring at Ultra Park is completed, I don't believe the cameras are installed as of yet.
Scheduled for.
Okay, perfect. Um, grant projects, sixty-three, one thirteen, a signal modification or modernization. Uh, that's scheduled to, to happen sometime in the next couple of months, don't have a, an exact schedule at this point. Our straight vision signage project, that's for the bike lanes, um, that's out for bid. The adaptive signal system for the Main Street, uh, adaptive is out for bid as well. Uh, Main Street Sidewalk, um, still trying to resolve the, the sidewalk issues with Smile Realty. As far as, you know, who's paying what and how much. Um, then working on the, the sign relocations for those three properties.
Is that holding anything up at this point or is that just?
It really is because we haven't, uh, got. Response from. Their attorney, it was in the, in Andy's hands with their attorney, they. Handed it off to him to, to try and resolve and apparently it's, it hasn't been, uh. Conversations haven't really been.
Well, I mean, the land development rule is pretty clear about who's responsible.
Then the issue is they think they can do it cheaper.
Figure out a payment.
Yeah.
Cause, uh.
I don't think it should be holding us up because that's a payment issue, it's. A later issue, Frank, as far as I'm concerned.
Right, I guess, yeah.
Or. Counsel, or do they just take the plan and they install it ahead of us, then we just don't put that section in? Do we care if they do that? If they think they can do it cheaper?
The issue is, we're, we'd be giving them the design, and that's part of the, the costs that we have expended.
Right.
In this, that they would otherwise have to expend, they'd have to, to, uh, do the construction inspection. They'd have to follow, you know, all the, if they were doing it on their own as a standalone project.
They would have to pay for all that.
They'd have to pay for all that, that's part of our argument is that it's not going to be cheaper. And oh, by the way, there are a bunch of utilities that have to be relocated because when they did the grading on the project. Thinking that sidewalk was never gonna happen, they didn't account for the sidewalk when they installed the utilities and did the grading. So there's another set of challenges that have to be, that I don't think they're taking into account.
Right.
And I think their, their engineers just say, oh, yeah, yeah, you know, that's a, our number's a crazy number and, you know, we think we can do it cheaper. But they haven't given us, to my knowledge, they haven't given us any, any numbers as to what they, they think they can do it for. But, so we're just kind of at the stalemate, it's, you know, and I don't know what the, the path forward is, I think, but we have an engineer's meeting next week that we're, we need to.
Seek resolution.
Figure this out and move forward, and if it's, uh. Come to Jesus meetings, okay, you know, forward to just what, send your bill.
Well, I think that's just to make sure Andy has provided the right guidance or whatever the appropriate notice provisions are under their approval of land development, so that. When we go to seek red, the, the money, we haven't violated one of the notice provisions, that's really all this comes down to in my opinion is, or have they been given proper notice that the assessment is tough. Because we have, even on the second class township code, we have the right to go out and do this, well, it assesses them, so then, there, there's two avenues we can go after on this. It's just a matter of appropriate notice so that we don't. Forfeit that ability.
And, and I think the township has been more unfair and taken pervert steps when it was first brought to us, you know, and it's understanding, oh, we didn't know we had this, you know, I know. You know, that stuff could happen, they should, they should, but that could happen, so we understand that, we said, let's talk about. I mean, at this point, it's all, perhaps we should just see how we can get it. That's.
From Pendon and everything as well. And the other things that, you know, were. There are three business signs that are, you know, within the, in the right of way, now they were. Put there by permit. So we're not taking a hard line and saying, okay, you need to, you know. Relocate your sign, we're looking to do that in advance of the project so that it's not, it doesn't complicate the project itself, so. There's other costs that we're, you know, we're willing to work with the property.
I think there's a clause in that permit that notifies them, if it's in the right of way, it needs to be moved, it's on them, isn't there? I have to look back on it, or a tip or issue quite a while. Okay, once. Weaver Rechner, isn't that?
No, 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 these are the two.
The other two.
We were reckoner, it's the other two, it's, uh, Camp Bartis and the, uh.
But they may have had the existence.
Yeah, they just changed it.
Yeah, they modified and stayed in location. So. Okay. We're working on that, uh. Uh, we've got Grace working on a number of grant opportunities, there's a Pico Green Region Grant, they're not significant dollars, but they're still. Free money, uh, one is for L E D lights for, uh, Roth Park. Around the pond. And another one is solar light, solar parking lot lights and some trees at Park Avenue Fields. So I think they'd be worthwhile projects. Uh, there's also a local share account funding that's, uh, available and a couple of projects we're considering. Is, uh, you know, pay for the new roof at, uh, Jacob Wright House. And also we talked about, uh, constructing the police impound garage. And get funding through that. I think that's something that. With some contracted help that the, you know, the, the township could tackle ourselves. And, uh. Be a, a, a good project for. For my team, and I think it would be a worthwhile project, especially if we can do it. Uh, you know. As a package or, you know, figure out a way to, to, to do this to, so that we're not spending, you know. Hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, but just to do it inexpensively and, and. Get that project done and then we can look at, you know, the possibility of. Uh. Subdividing that property and getting rid of the, the house and the barn and. Getting out of the, the landlord and the things from, from that, for that property. Um, just some department activities, got a drainage issue on Camp Walla Road, it says six ninety-four, it's between Alderman and the bridge. Uh, it's gravel driveway and water just kept coming down the driveway and then bleed out over the road and. Icy spots and potholes, uh, so. The road is very flat, no ground in the road, so we put some ground in the road, did some drainage, there's existing swales on the inside of the driveway, so. We regraded the swales, uh, hopefully that'll solve that issue.
On that issue, we talked about grants, I know I'd sent you for the low volume road grant program for the Conservation District. I'm just, I know you tried to with Cobra Road and that sort of didn't work out, maybe with Grace too, if we can get someone else besides you that goes to that training program, just so we're eligible. But there's three hundred thousand dollars just sitting out there and like that type of work, some of these, you know, some of our. Roads, but they have stormwater issues and all that, the money's just sitting there and it's just, then no one's applying, so it's a good opportunity for us in some of those areas. Okay.
Absolutely. Um. We surface the, uh, the trails in the Summerwind Community. There were a lot of, uh, ravelled asphalt in there and. For contention. Uh, we actually had Fran Conia, township assist us with hauling materials, so got a really good working relationship with that. Um, working on the hockey, you know, the courts at, uh, at Boomer. Basketball courts, we're gonna need a final patch for the, the small cracks that are still there. And then the, the bottom coating, the hockey ring, it's a lot of patching material that we've, we've been using and doing there, but. Uh, we think it's time and effort well spent. Um, Upper Southford Township is going to be paving Rock Road. I think starting tomorrow, so they're looking to close. Freeman School Road at Southfordville to detour traffic during. Uh, just a couple items of discussion, the James House and Barn at the golf course, I know we've talked about. Long-term plans and trying to move everything forward and, uh, you know, even as part of the Public Works facility. To, uh, uh, try to have a. A temporary storage location for. During that transition time when we're under construction. Um, I met with Mike Hart of Hart Demolition about, uh, demolishing both the barn and the, uh, and the house. Um, so he's given me an estimate for. One of them for the house, and unfortunately we're trying to do this without putting it out for public bid. Um, so I've got an estimate that is just below the. The bidding threshold to, to do that work. And then the thought was if we do one this year and maybe the other, the barn next year. That we can get this, these buildings removed and then kind of continue that process of. Of moving forward, so I just wanted to, to get your feedback and your thoughts on. Process and the concept.
But first question, who pays? The Recreation Authority activity on the golf course, township Public Works responsibility?
Um, I believe the. Uh, the house that the lease belongs to township.
The, the what?
The house.
At least that, but the ground, you mean the ground, I thought that was all part of the same property.
Uh, is, isn't it, I thought it was a separate.
While we're looking at, has there been any talks with the Historical Society on the barn, and for example, I know some of the. Developments that have come in, I know that they've said they've reached out to take even photos and stuff like that before, you know, going through, has there been any? It might be worthwhile at least reach out to them, see if they want to take any photos.
That may have already been done.
And that's what I don't know, it's my mess. And other things, you know, I know sometimes the ground's old, you know, they take metal detectors out there, find different things that, you know, people have had before any kind of. Work is done, you know, that's something that I would. Think is worthwhile to reach out, really, I don't know much about the house.
It's what I said, significance there, Mike.
Significant historical value.
Triangle.
Yes.
The Pope House.
Yeah, that's all in one parcel with the, uh, with the barn and the house. Fairness is maybe a question for our friends at Recreation Authority, but. This board.
And while we're, while we're talking about that, uh, another question, you know.
Share responsibilities, since township's gonna benefit. This, not, well, building the move. I, I, I think the township has more than supported the golf courses, it's a debt service.
Has there been special?
Which affects my pretty little.
Has there been discussion with the lease, with the, the Recreation Authority and splitting the lease for the, uh, it was mentioned.
Yeah, yeah, that's the percentage of the use.
Houses up.
Yeah. And I'm not, we, have we got that percentage of what they're using the, the garage for?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the garage for all street, right?
That's why I know that.
Yeah.
But I, but in fairness, I'm not sure. If it's all Recreation Authority property, regardless of if we even split the cost to demolition, but. It should still be made.
It's gotta be action.
Go through the recreation.
You know, it's funny, I did a, um, a similar question here, actually, that I had, or, but. I was curious too, I know this has been a banner year for the golf club, that'd be, you know, for the Recreation Authority, when there is a profit, where does the surplus get allocated to? Because I know that you can't, you know, pay, say, okay, but that's structured in a way that might be fixed, my curiosity is to. So it does, back to township again, I don't know if we can pay.
They produce. What we have to pay, yeah. I would also hope that they're, I'm sure they are under the diligent leadership that authority, putting money in for, uh, the capital repairs of those. Part paths and other things.
Not only putting money in, we're actually doing it.
Right, yeah, if they're getting to the age that that's gonna.
That's where that's been. All profit essentially.
Paying down. Thank you. So I guess the question is, I mean, even though it's already, is there anybody on this board that has a problem with that happening? If the house isn't for repair, it's.
It's a cost gap.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, I like, I like to hear the historical significance first, right, so yes.
I don't think the house itself is, it's. Not at all. We probably.
So we do have, um. Very long list of historical everything, the township that came from the Historical Society back in the eighties, nineties. So, um, I'll look through that. I'll show you email on the Johnson area.
Did have, it's been disturbed, all of course, construction, right? Even the grade out there is completely different.
Accessibility is very good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the guy's houses was that is big, built in eighteen fifty.
Okay.
It could have been hand-built by a. Yeah, or something like that, I think just my one takes some pictures.
Well, yeah, I think a full survey, yeah. And if anything works out.
Specifically, we've run into this where we've heard they tried to do that, but, well, we have Sam, you know, they can't say, let them look at that, this is not.
The other thing, and I, I know Mike's usually pretty good about that. I know that, like Joan and those guys, they're always looking for period correct. Doors, windows, pieces, that that house may be beneficial to like Jacob Wright or one of the other ones for pieces. To use it stockpiled or replace certain things. Yeah, because that's all Mike's gonna do is take it apart and sell it for that stuff, so, you know, get some of it out of it, yeah.
In regards to, uh, not putting enough for bids too, obviously, you're saying it could, well, obviously, you're saying he would be lower than what the average person. Yeah, could we started as, I don't, and I'm not familiar, so you could help me with this, my ignorance, but we say, hey, we have some, you know, this is the market we're starting. Or does he bid just like everybody else and happens to bid low, somebody could go low with that, I mean. We could still get a lower price is what I'm saying hypothetically, and we should keep it open to.
We could, uh. We need, even if it's under the bid threshold that we're required to get, or at least attempt to get other quotes.
Right.
As long as there's other people out there who are willing to do the work, go and get quotes from them. We would be happy, that's part of. Right, so if it's in between. I'm gonna use ten thousand dollars, but it's, it's not quite ten thousand dollars, a little bit more, but. We'll say between ten and twenty thousand dollars, we still need to get re-quote, or we need to attempt to get re-quotes. And, you know, so we have to. Put a note in the file that says we attempted to reach out to these people, they never responded, you know, and we have a copy of the email or whatever that we reached out to them. To ensure that, you know, for the auditors, that we did attempt to get additional quotes, if there's no other quotes, then, then we can move forward. As long as it's under the fright.
That makes sense, I just didn't know, I mean, like, I know a guy, English guy, you know.
And then it's the not going out public bid is that now you don't get a set of specs, frontiering and annoying, and it's, it keeps the force of the way that. How we have. For the price of this.
Standard with the job.
Exactly, yeah, well. And if you're familiar with the guy who does the demolition, he always does a real nice job, so it's always. Could be going, could be, you know, know their work.
But that, that's what I'm saying too, because you, I know people, well, you.
No, I know, so you're saying they're good. Get free bids, sorry. He's gonna be up.
Thank you.
So, um, my next issue is. We've been looking for, and I have in my budget for this year, a, a plow for our new loader. We stumbled on a, uh, a relatively new concept, maybe not so new, but newer in the municipal in things, like, pull that up. It's called a metal plus plow, and it's, uh, it's actually a winged. Um, the unit that we're looking for is got a ten foot wide standard blade. And then two five foot wings on, on the, uh, one on either side. That can, uh. Can basically go into any configuration, it could be a push box, it can go back, so if you're plowing roads or narrow streets or cul-de-sacs. Uh, any, any common combination, any configuration.
Does it, uh.
It angles.
Angles, yeah, great, that's terrific.
Yeah, everything angles and like I said, the wings are fully functional and go at a hundred and eighty degrees. Challenge is it's not on coastarts. And it's more than the bidding threshold, so we would have to write a spec.
Uh. Right there.
Like, does, do other people manufacture?
There's probably some others that are out there, I mean, I have the spec from. Metal plus that we can use, but.
That are equal.
Yeah, exactly, we gotta just be careful that it's not too tight, that, you know, nobody else could bid it, but, uh. And there are, there are two suppliers that I know that. That handle that, that plow. So.
Uh, well, and that's the thing, then it's not, it doesn't even, it could be three people who are.
Exactly, right.
Plow that'll sell you at a different price.
Yeah, get as many bids as we can, I mean, if it's the same.
And this will be great for cul-de-sacs in particular, which is, who are always a bit of.
That's what, what I envisioned is us using this on one thirteen and Main Street, you know, during the snowstorms. Where, you know, when we do, do the clearing, it's three trucks, you know, because the challenge is the inconsistent width. You know, you get areas like you're coming down the hill towards, uh, towards Main Street on one thirteen. It's, you know, eighty feet wide. You know, it's just, it's, it's a challenge and it's time consuming and, um, if we could. It's not gonna obviously travel as fast as a truck would, but when you're plowing twenty feet or angled eighteen feet versus. Ten, you know, you're way ahead of the game, I think it's a, it will go a long way. To keeping those roads open and passable during the events, and then once the snow events are over, we can roll that into the cul-de-sacs and. You know, the golf course, you know, you have eighty foot diameter cul-de-sacs, that can wipe out a couple of minutes. You know, where pickup truck in there is just taking, you know, fifteen or twenty minutes by the time you clean everything up. So I think it, it would go a long way. Towards the efficiency of the operation.
If anybody watches the planning commission meetings, there's always discussion of how we're gonna, how we're gonna navigate these on developments to some of them, so that could be helpful. Doug, I'm always impressed by the longevity of this, but, uh, I don't know if this is, if you have any idea how long, you know, plow could last with the weather elements, stuff like that, just curiosity.
Something like that, we would expect to, to get fifteen years out.
Okay.
I would think that would. As long as we went on the machine. About fifteen, twenty years, we, we'd have lower, so.
Or, or longer. And we were longer.
Another.
Well, yeah, exactly, longer is a credit to.
We're gonna fix our method when we're done.
Statistically, the credit is having good mechanic in there and keeping it. Oh, statistically, the credit is having good mechanic in there and keeping it up, that you do with your.
With this, one of the benefits with this, we've looked at wing plows that are on the side of the trucks. The challenge with those is they're behind you, you know, you're looking through a mirror, or even if you have a camera. You know, you don't have that clear, clear vision of it. With this, everything's out in front of you, which is one of the things that I really like. Perkyomen Township has a smaller version of this, they put on a uh a tractor. I think it's an eight footer with three foot wings, so it's like a fourteen foot unit, and they love it, the guy says it just knocks out. All, you know, his route in like half the time that it normally would take him. And he's had it for a few years, he's had no issues with it, it's it's great, it's built solid. It's a Canadian company, they're used to snow and it it's intended. It's, you know, I think the original intent was for like. Uh large industrial complexes where you've got these, you know, these trailer loading docks that are just this massive parking. Areas or paved areas that you could just wipe out in the blink of an eye, right, versus with trucks, it just, it would take three trucks and, you know, twice the time. So.
Um, what's the price? I'm seeing a price differentiation as opposed to this or the next best thing.
Close to double. Uh we're looking at probably in forty five thousand dollar range for this. Um but again, I think it's something that's. Well worth it, the investment, just from a, from an efficiency standpoint.
Does it fold all the way in on itself, or does it only fold up to the the position it's in now?
It's just what it's in now, it's just like a a push box.
Got it, that's great.
So, and what do we have?
We had twenty five thousand, but uh we, I also had thirty five thousand for a new ten ton trailer. That we were able to uh to buy a used one from a another local resident. That we only paid ten thousand dollars for, so there's another twenty five thousand dollars there to. Cover these, the additional expense.
Sounds like you have the.
Heather covers.
Perhaps that looks good to me, per shoot with the bidding price. Yeah, so I'm hoping that. The next meeting to request authorization to advertise and then have the bids open at the November meeting. Hopefully we'll have it for the personnel.
Thank you for being, I know the other bids in the past, so that we have a.
Right, so there's no snow?
Exactly.
That's all I have, if they have any answer questions.
Thanks, Doug. Paved uh Royal Road. Down across from the elementary school there, was that?
That was a uh.
I gotta tell you, you did a phenomenal job.
That's the Novichu.
They did a great job.
They did a fantastic job. You're paying both of those.
It's, it's beautiful, really.
Even down to adjusting the utility. Excellent job. From someone who travels that road, probably, yeah, then they should.
There were, I know the two that you were talking about, that, yeah, that, they were.
Could not miss that.
Yeah, I know. But yeah.
I was very impressed.
It's, it's a lot of planning, a lot of effort that goes into into making all that come together, so it's uh. Between my team and A and M. If we were to pave into an inch and a half overlay, then we wouldn't have to mill it first, so there's that additional cost, but. Two bucks a square yard or whatever it is now. Um so we were just able to, you know, adjust the inlets, adjust the uh the manholes, valve boxes, everything to uh. To do that without milling.
Yeah, that's terrific.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Jones? Alright, moving on, Chief Med.
Yes, sir, Doug already mentioned the park cameras at Old River. Uh we needed to put two poles in. For to cover the entire park. Each pole will have ETC, three stationary cameras. Uh scheduled for tomorrow morning, so it should be operational by end of day, keep everybody apprised. The other thing was the uh Morris Road. Traffic survey, um we've had some complaints of speeding. Uh loud mufflers and now uh right turns from Morris to one thirteen, have that map.
This one?
Yeah. Well, that's the, that's the study, or is a map of it, just to. Show, show the area to talk about, and I know we've had a separate. Claim uh of property damage, uh goes at a right turn. Uh tires, even siding and air conditioning unit. Hey, was that, I was wondering about that air conditioning unit on the bill. Building, it looks suspiciously right about the same time that they ran the sewer line up there.
We all agree.
Yeah.
Except for the contract.
It wasn't. Wire walls damaged and something hit it just about it. But there's a trench. You feel all of it. Could have been, it could have been. So even in our traffic, uh is what. Uncomfortable in amateur traffic study. But just in the line at the, just to generate uh the numbers like that up there. Uh there was fifty six hundred cars. Uh involved, right vehicles. The speed uh was at, the average speed was thirty eight, so that's not dramatic. But the uh. There's uh, that's the speed data, the the next one will be the length. Data analysis, show the different types of vehicles. So it's a multi-unit trucks, only nine. But. If you can imagine driving a truck up Morris Road, right, your goal is to make a right, it's not gonna happen. So we're at least to the point that we wanna propose uh maybe a more professional track. See what the best off. Strict from traffic on Morris Road uh by weight or length. Uh are we only gonna restrict right turns, but if you get up to the intersection. Then you'd have to either go straight, try to navigate a left, uh but. Uh just a right turn with a tractor trailer, so. So I don't know, I mean, I guess it's not a high trial, you know, about fifty six hundred. So.
They they come down uh Kinsey Road and Upper Mainland and are always knocking that sign up. I've seen it, what, how many times was replaced last year? You know, that, because they're using their their uh Google Maps in their tractor trailer, it's not. Yeah. It it like what, four times last year, I think. Yeah, right. And then once you get, and once it closes, it's gonna be ten times worse, they're gonna get to the bottom of that, make a right, they'll never get through it, so.
Yeah, I don't know, with that sign. Oh, but you know, it's it's too close or.
Then it'll be all over ladies front lawn.
Put them out at different, so they'll stick out, you know, much as it gets clipped on a regular basis.
Does like study like this allow us to make a motion, or we have to have more official, as we said, this is. To me, it gives us the the numbers, the information, I don't know what. Authority or what we could do, whether we go say, hey, let's, maybe we shouldn't have right turns here, so I think.
Board has the authority to do whatever the board. Limiting.
So the the question is, the volume nine multi-unit trucks is in that section of Morris Road. And I just wanted, that is, all of them are heading towards one thirteen, or is that nine?
So I figured buses.
Well, yeah, we got plenty of buses, yeah.
One's gonna go one way, then that. And are there any problems?
Never.
You mustn't assume that there are actual turn. So I think what I'm saying. So.
Somebody is.
A formal traffic analysis at that intersection. Clear all that. No words, they'll put cameras out there and get the actual turning movement, so you know, kind of what the function of that intersection is doing. Which wouldn't be the worst thing in the world in that uh there have been some adjustments out there over time. Right, from its original installation, so. Uh my opinion is that based on what Tom put forth, it seems to me it warrants some attention. Given the fact that there's proper damage out there, I think it'd be well advised. Take some kind of action in terms of, especially if we're gonna limit. Turning movements, we're gonna want to have some kind of engineering basis for it. I I.
So is there any way we can ascertain the direction of turns through centracs? I don't know, but that information is stored, and I don't think it is, it's.
Yeah, that's not connected.
Then, the other issue, as I started to wrote, is is the S turn. And you look at the the multi-unit trucks. And one of the guidelines, you know, for doing these traffic studies and to restrict truck traffic. Is if making any kind of returning movement. Do you, does that, any part of the vehicle end up in the oncoming lane? And and just in mind, looking at that, there's no way that that. You know, either the trailer or the tractor is not heading in the.
Something's gonna be in.
Exactly right, so I mean, just from that standpoint, one just, you know, looking at the eye test. That that part of the road doesn't pass the eye test as far as.
My grandfather used to drive trucks, very familiar with. Understanding. So that I was prepared to drive a truck. Any, any of those intersections there, right there. But that one in particular, it's something, you're gonna, they're gonna be comping, people are gonna have to back, it's gonna. I mean. If. For me, like, I try to get a traffic study, how much is that, that traffic study?
We're bringing the S band, this is in right turns, there is a description with trucks on the section of Morris. From what, freshman?
Fosher.
Fosher. Fosher to one thirteen is what you're actually talking. And just for, you know. There's reference to combined numbers and that lane one and lane two. So. What if one thirteen is. East, west, actually, west by southeast. So lane two is going towards intersection. So that is. That back, or that should be, is included in the. I mean, what, that may not be.
If you're at the intersection with one thirteen, heading, heading that way, and you wanna make a right turn, right turn, you don't make a right turn.
And my only, my only concern to do this without having a traffic study. If we put a sign up at either end that restricts those multi-unit trucks, is it enforceable under the traffic code without documentation? So if someone.
It might be another. But.
I think, I think one of the things that's beneficial.
What, what does this tell us that would say that we should live in full traffic? I, I think with.
Be best plus any report they have. In there. Quick file. About issues with turning.
More detailed examination, though you're not only. You know, give you better reading, problem, but also this sort of. Like, what's the level of intervention? It's always an option to do nothing, but then see exactly how bad this is if it keeps happening. Or do we restrict all trucks or, you know, just the right turns? Now, there, you can give advanced warning that there's no right turn up there, but once you get up there. Would somebody still attempt it, but of course, it, we're restricting the return, and they're gonna have to find another way. I think there's enough roads at that intersection that can fly another way, but will. And I can't imagine, the reason it might be nine is that there's probably nobody that's trying to.
Right, right, yeah, that's that. I think nine solidifies that it might be.
Google.
Yeah, that's, that's what I think, so I don't think if. And I, I think with only nine, it makes it easier on our end that you could say, hey, let's restrict traffic, because if we only had nine, see the people aren't taking it one. You know, there's other options.
Not necessarily, it could be a one, so. Full delivery water, they come in one way and. And you can't, you cannot do that.
And and I guess I'm not a fan of having unenforceable traffic signs. Because then. Where I, I think that's absent or what is our duty is, if we're gonna do this, let's do it properly, so that then if someone is in, is violating. We can actually take them through the process that's appropriate.
And and that was the question that I was asking, but I said, so is it enforceable if we were to do it as a board, or would we need a better study?
Well, I, I, I. Cause our. And I'm not, and I'm not arguing whether this is good enough. We could make an argument.
Yeah.
That this is good.
I mean, technically.
Is it?
If we change, we change the sign words, for example, there's no study behind that, so. You know, somebody can say, hey, now this affects me, and try to argue with us, but there was no study, the board decided to make that. That's what I was asking, if it's still enforceable or not. If it's enforceable, we can do it.
Be an argument maybe.
And and they could argue even if we get a traffic study.
A full crowd. All of the issues involving, involving road and the. Really involved. Row.
How about if we restrict the flow on the road, what are the impacts on others? Like, if we're telling people they can't go down that road, are they gonna go down a different road, it's gonna, a different problem, I think we should get the study.
How much is the study about? A study covers all of the basics, right, it's the roadway geometry, other encumbrances on the roadway. Where to place the signage, what signage to place, like, it, it covers a a. Gambit of things that, you know, this kind of, I think is a foundation for that study, certain. But there's more that goes into it, so, whether you wanna do it or not, that's.
We get both of stuff. And I, I think it's worth the proposal. I will just note too, we're, we're talking about an issue where it was an eleven day study, am I correct on that? And there is nine trucks. Nine days, that was, nine days, ten days. By the time you're done. A month. Or a year, here's a lot of trucks running. Less than one a day. Long, yeah, but it's a big truck. And the first one has got his uh that. And it owns the properties there, the trucks running over, or you're, you're, you know, in other lanes coming around the corners, so. Just, just get a proposal. I would, I'm happy to do the proposal, I don't think we can base it on this, that's my only concern, I'm happy to do the proposal, because I think the answer is to restrict it on the whole length of road, and I think we just need more data to do.
I know our budget is high with our engineer at this percentage, but the percentage is higher than it was, I think, last year with engineering. And that's the only reason I want to see it, but I'm saying, I absolutely think we should fix this, if it's.
Wait till next year.
No, 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 I don't wanna wait, my question was, is if we're able to do this now and say, hey, let's, let's restrict it, let's restrict it. So that's really what I wanna see, I'm all forcing the proposal, how much it costs this building, consider the S, it's gonna get. And and by supervisor. I agree that traffic, it's gonna have to, but. I don't know where to set them, but.
Some of the traffic stuff. We realize that the roadway geometry is an issue, and the turning movement at the intersection is an issue, let's focus on those two points, if it meets warrants. For those, then.
Right, yeah.
Road restructure, they sound, we don't. You know, we can figure out where signage needs to go. To, you know, we have all the guidance for that, to, to uh to install the signage, and we don't need that aspect of it, just. Do the turning templates. Tell us whether or not it's gonna be, it should be restricted or not.
Yeah. Good, that, good.
Play right.
In the meantime, since we do have some property damages as well, so it's something that we wanna. Yes, I mean, we don't want that. We don't want that to continue with the property damage, it's something that we should.
Houses. Taken more than its fair share. After installation. Now, if it started, I think, more on the minor side with the wall, it's a long.
More on the minor side with the wall, it's a long fence for the intersection. Uh it's been struck a few times by by vehicles. And then the construction. Seems to have precipitated.
We're talking about his balls, not his personal residence down the street. Right, so it's really just at the intersection. If I don't think I. Have a real hard time believing that was done by anything other than construction activity.
The lines and the damage to the, you know, the window, they, you know, that's up to that, they say they had nothing to do. You know, again, we can, we can go back in the May, the earliest. Latest and see that, you know, through the uh the street. Viewed program that we have, that that what was not damaged. And. When do they start construction? Oh, you know, right, not long, not long after that. So couldn't have been something else, it absolutely could have, but it just seems like. A little too coincidental. For us.
And you said you are, we're looking at today, you know, that's good. Yeah, I guess in my closing, it's up to you as well. It's, you know, I don't want this to be a lengthy thing, obviously, is what I'm saying. If we're having damage. We can say right now, no turns, but that can don't sound like that's what we want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you. Very good. Moving right along, Mr. Beauty Building and Zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So far in this month, we have twenty-nine building permits that raise your. Purpose total. Field reporting the. The expected downtime and permitting during September. We have a request from a resident or a setback waiver. Or a recent subdivision that was for the title subdivision, one of the new owner, one of the lots. Would actually like to construct their home closer to. Uh or into the required setback, front yard setback. In order to not disturb as many trees in the back. Now it's a waiver because it's not any closer than the required front yard setback presumed. Required front yard setback in year one A seventy-five feet. However, for flag lots, that's required to be increased by twenty-five percent. For the salvo. So you have the authority to grant waiver salvo. And so the required front yard setback is ninety-three point seventy-five feet. And they would like to go back to the go forward into that setback to seven five feet. So meet the zoning requirement, but just not meet the salvage. So that would require a waiver. And so they officially requested that waiver and as you can imagine, we don't. Process situation very often. So normally waivers are requested as part of the land development or the subdivision. But anyone can add for a waiver at any time, so that's what this resident is doing. And it would just be the same alone, it's not for the whole subdivision because that was already approved and done and recorded. So it's just for this one resident would like to go approach into the ninety-three point seventy-five foot. Salvo setback. Up to seventy-five feet. So. So that request. I'm processing it through the department and. I can get all the information in front of you and have everything official. Uh right now, we did not send it to the township engineer because, you know, we're humanist, it's pretty simple request. And they have, they've provided exhibits and they'll come in and discuss with you. Breath of the. Request. And.
They spoke to the owner of the. House.
Right.
They are.
Mark Tuttle, who still owns the house in front of theirs. Then he submitted a. He said he had no problems and he comes out of the country right now, but he submitted an email and said he had no problem with the request.
To what? To maybe clarify something first, maybe me and all. Why do we have the percentage increase on the flag lot?
The purpose.
Yeah, it's the rationale I know, if there is, if you didn't.
Yeah, there's always, there's always rationale. So from my perspective, it appears that that rationale is because you're having front yard attendants. Your front door that's going in, your front yard going into the backyard, so just to provide a little bit more distance there.
And what was he going to get? A garage?
It might, the the flag lots, they have to be larger than the standard lot. In the ordinance also, right?
Just the dimension.
Just the dimension, not the minimum lot size.
When I know, yes.
I know a lot of places I know land use at this point, flag lots are double the size of the underlying zoning, double the setbacks, they just. To try it because they are an interior lot to the the front one, which is sort of a trend in. Don't fully understand it, but.
Doesn't make any sense.
There was a lot of waivers of flag lots for that R four with the exceptions that by. I first hopped on.
The uh.
So this is.
With the one single until there.
No, the uh.
That's that's a town.
So this is the approved total subdivision was a three lot subdivision, if you recall. This is Mr. Mark Tuttle's property, this was the whole track. Not long ago and it went through the subdivision process to subdivide it, this front lot. And the flag lot that accesses. On the northern part of. The uh the track back here to. And which is the subject lot we're talking about and then another lot down here accessing from the other side. Back here, so the required front yard setback. Is ninety-three point seven five feet, if I remember correctly, that's this line here. Okay, so that's how that's. That's how they went through the subdivision process. For most of that back there, now they just wanna push this forward to the. The zoning required seventy-five feet. And move as many trees in the back.
A fully wooden lot right now?
Pretty much.
Please, so wouldn't he be just cutting trees down the front then?
Well, I think you're cutting, you're cutting everything through that driveway in the house. So if you, if you move it up eighteen feet, you're just. Save it eighteen feet to the rear. I I. Is that his actual plot plan or is that what's on the plan right now?
That's what's on the plan right now.
What's his actual plot plan look like?
They haven't gone down that route yet because they don't know exactly where they the house.
Well, I I think it would be helpful there because that's that house and everything else has no relevance to what they're probably building. It would probably be helpful to have a. To give the relief. I think we should at least have the benefit of exactly what are they trying to build?
Yeah.
To do it in a vacuum, all that could mean is they're gonna still disturb the same number of trees, they're just building a bigger house and starting in front of a big back beaver. And they have every right to do that. But until we know, that's just a a footprint that Rick picked up, I would think on that plan, that's not what's being built.
And I don't really have a strong opinion at all till I see the exhibits, I said, so I'm saying thing, honestly, too, I'm curious, does Mr. Tuttle plan on staying there? I remember it was one of the questions I thought, you know, right? You know, if he says that, he could be moving within the year, so that's another thing that. Well, see her as well.
And they don't have to follow the driveway plan or anything else that's on this, just an example. They could bring the driveway in on the opposite side of the house, less disturbance. So it would be really helpful for them to actually have a. Have the plot plan as, this should be done as part of their building permit application. So that you have the documentation, if they need to relieve, ask it at that. And that would be my opinion. I mean, I mean, it makes the most sense. I think it's, if you're giving. Leave, it should be specific to the relief that's necessary, not just generic. But 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 I'm not, I don't really wanna just give. If I'm, if I'm even inclined to do so.
Footprint and you you want the grading as well?
They should just give it a plot plan they're intending to use to make their case for why. I don't know if by granting this, we're doing the intended benefit that they're saying, which is to save trees.
Right, but they don't necessarily. Abandon the expense to produce all this if we say no.
So I think the response to. The applicant is to say that the board. Is not against. Them asking to sway from what they might.
And I think it's worthwhile to say, just more information. Oh, if you didn't have.
Well, there's another pot next to it, it's gonna.
As I mentioned before, there are no zoning. Off and road. The upcoming planning commission is gonna be a pretty busy one. We have covenant president Terry Ranger spending an application for land development. For a seventeen thousand plus building condition, square foot building condition, plus seventy plus parking spaces and. All the improvements to that parking lot that's at the corner of Covenant Lane and Main Street. That's part of the whole thing. Okay, so they're gonna be on the agenda and one ninety-six Main Street is moving forward with the with. With the approval process that already received conditional use. For not long ago and now they're, they've spent preliminary plans for the development, so no changes, it's just that. Those plans are now being reviewed under the land development requirements. Okay, so I think it's gonna be here that. Seven twenty-nine Harley's Hill Pike is an applicant that is coming in with a sketch plan, it's a four lot. Uh subdivision, it's just south of Lero, split zone. It's R two in the front and then R one A in the back. So two lots in the front. And two flag lots in the back. What they're proposing. So we're gonna be hearing that sketch plan, so no action, it's just to hear the the comments for the planning commission. Because it's got a plan submission. And the or the applicant JD. Orleans, JP Orleans, or eighty-eight Harley's Hill Pike has submitted a preliminary final land development. Plan for review and so that's being approved by the planning commission. On the upcoming meeting. They have, it's unchanged for the, from the recent sketch, which was twenty-six dwelling. And this has been going on back and forth for about a couple of years, I'd say. And so now they're finally submitting the land development, so now this is. This is a actionable item where. They're actually asking for their approvals now. So so those four items are on the agenda, the upcoming planning commission meeting. And looking forward. To your board meeting on uh in October. So far, all we have is hot up land development, that's the three plans in Lero. And that was already up for discussion of the waivers. So now this would be. This, this should be for a plan approval. Potentially, potentially on KJM and that's all.
Very good. Any questions for Mike?
Mike, uh last time I asked, uh. Don't remember addressing one eighty-nine Main Street with the extra stuff, uh since then, I remember, I don't know if you can roll here, but. Pumping gas literally the night before this, somebody said, hey, we're just talking, you know, what's with all those cars? I noticed there is a lot. Uh since then, their their issue was for the aesthetics, you know, hey. Pretty terrible, but they're honest to say, but. Safety reasons why, uh not to, I've looked at it again, I know we talked about this with Amazon things in the past, but. There's three, four, you know, for like four, there's like four or five rows, three work vehicles stacked back there. I don't know, you know, where the keys are, that's and that, and there's no, I didn't pull in there, our property might have to do that, but I would have imagined it'd be a hard time. Maneuver around there, I was just curious if there's any update. On their part.
So we're looking into that, that has the law that site has a long history. And it's a long history of stock or any, so it's industrial use. And a district that's not industrials are district. And so there's, there's history that we're looking into because through that history, that existing non-informity. Which is a legal non-informity was allowed to expand to a certain degree. Okay, so we we already have an industrial use with, that allows for. And that's where the bank is storage, so. So what that line is, whether or not that has been exceeded, is what we are still looking.
I appreciate, I mean, my curiosity is if like, are they allowed to have, obviously, just given a number, ten, twenty, looks like they got like that, you know, I don't know. That's what I'm asking, if there's a set number they're allowed to have them under those rules, or they.
Not that I know.
That's pretty much all.
Don't prolong this, but.
Yeah.
Too many compared to what. I know they just look like anything has changed there. In years, it's operated the same way. It hasn't been great looking, it's an industrial use that, you know, we even had applications before, that CBS that was trying to commit and get rid of it so that it was. So there's been, but at the end of the day, it's an existing non-informity that doesn't appear to change. There's an appropriate traffic flow because of what they did when they extended the roadway and there's fencing, I don't know if we can police aesthetics with them is what it comes.
And it's not, that's, as I said, my concern was not aesthetics, that's why I said the neighbors were saying that. Well, and and you know, that's not my concern, my concern is, and I I'm with you, and and my question is, do they have too many cars? That's all, if they're allowed to have it, they're fine. You know, I sit back down, I'll tell the neighbors, well, this was done a while ago with conformities. You know, we won't do that in the future, but that's, that's my question, do they have too many vehicles?
I'd be shocked if we were anything with specificity of public vehicles, unfortunately, yeah, but we did.
That's that's the, that's the question.
Stores. Across the entire site, so the stacking of the the company vehicles. May not be a great concern because those are, those are being by one or two. Members, it's, they don't have to, it's very good, one in the back. Now for safety reasons, they they are meticulous with how they do that, as long as they have the correct amount of acceptable spaces. For the employees that in the drive. Right, so that they're not stacked. But we're we're looking into it.
It seems that way, again, I don't know, that's just generally my question, do they have too many vehicles, is it a safety issue? And I get, say aesthetically, that's what the neighbors said, my question. Thank you for this.
All right. Nothing else for Mr. Beauty, Mr. Jekowski, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um one item we have under the management board, Paulie and I, Paulie's been in discussions. With the Parable Eagles Football. About the possible naming rights, the fields at the Park Avenue. Park Facility. We have no policies. This type of thing at any of our parks. Currently, other than the kilo of the use of Park Avenue Fields. There's no official name uh that's been put in place for that facility. Uh so I guess the, this is kind of a two-fold discussion is. Do we wanna start considering naming that facility, putting that an official township sign out there and so forth? And the request from the Eagles for the naming rights of the individual fields. Again, both of these, um I consider uh policy decisions for the board to make. You know, I don't know if, you know, having a park named something and then having field name signs might be confusing. To uh the traveling public and or and the additional, the aesthetic of multiple signs. At, you know, the facilities and the question of, okay, we've done it here, now what happens at? All of the other parks with plain.
I think.
Already discussed this at our last meeting and we are not in favor of naming the field for the park. And this is a surprise, this.
Joe, you kind of said exactly our sentiments, we were casually talking, as we got here, asked how much questions about it. Again. For me, I was, my number one question was, can advance, how's the park or feel about it? Again, you know, it's called part field, you know, it's called part field right now, we don't, my other emphasis. If somebody comes up and you see, like for me, if I'm. If somebody comes up and you see, like for me, if I'm driving at night, we drive around, we'd love to go to parks, our township, other townships, could like. They describe each one, if I pull up and I see someone that says. Harley's illegal, someone say, well, kids can't play here, this is a field, and that's just, you know, if there's other ways of putting that signage different, that, that was my only thing. I didn't actually see first, you know, shit they've.
It's only a favorite, something else to.
And again, this is probably a leasability, we have to leave, it doesn't have a name.
No, but that's a different story.
I think that's great.
If we're gonna name it, we're probably not gonna name.
That would be nice to have someone that's actually in the township. And I think, I think the only thing that we would open up the door for it too is again. This isn't, this is our, that's a good point, this isn't our, this isn't our, um. You know, we don't have signs like this on any of the fields, they are consistent, I don't think, actually, as I said.
Not so fast, if you go to the community center. Yes, so we do, we do have some solid information. At various fields.
Right, and I've noticed them advertising for Harley's illegal, as you said on the scoreboard.
That's what I was gonna, exactly, I was gonna say on the field, we also come down, you know, in the winter time, stuff like that, there's no maintenance.
Because not all.
Well, and it's also, this was never meant to be a sole use facility.
Yeah, that was mine, that's my, that's my biggest thing, I wanted to be, what you said, we have a.
And in the future, I think of park board and or the board supervisor. Like if not.
Is they actually charged the park board for maybe making a suggestion to the board about a name for that, so that we can solve this issue.
So we will get back to. Hey, that's it for.
And basically, the park word says no, don't forget. Is there currently is, I'm similar to, I don't think there is, but like similar, we have a lot of firms that says the park. I didn't think so, because that still keeps an opportunity to put in the.
Yeah, I mean, the community center. You know, is technically a township facility, I, I didn't really put that in the. If we were, but I would think that would be a different kind of situation. That does come up and down.
Bad and making all sorts of things, right?
Basis, it's not like someone buys a sign and it's there.
No.
There's still. Way to earn additional income every year because. Advertisers.
Either be up or down.
Yeah, kind of be the make partnership. Roots, uh, overall, but again, as.
As history tells, veterans, they, you know, sound like we're on, better honoring the veterans.
Privately owned facility, now that privately owned, so. We got it.
Anything else for Mr. Jikowski this morning? Do we have need for executive session? Uh, do you do that?
Regarding a. Contractual, contractual issue.
Yes, very good. All right, with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn and. Move the second in all favor, say aye. Aye. Say nay. We're done for this morning, thank you.
Thank you.